Recording in progress.
Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, if anybody would like to approach the council and make a public comment for anything that's not on tonight's agenda, feel free to do so, state your name and address. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close the public comment period. Onto item agenda number three, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion as second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Onto item three A, swearing in of Officer Vic Weiss. Hope I said your name correctly.
Yeah, you got it. Can just meet you down over here. Two words at a time, that's all I can handle.
So repeat after me. I, Vic Weiss.
I, Vic Weiss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution, Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the position of police officer.
The duties of the position of police officer.
Of Saint Joseph, Minnesota.
Of Saint Joseph, Minnesota.
I will well and truly serve.
I will well and truly serve.
Our sovereign country.
Our sovereign country.
And state without fervor or affection.
And state without fervor and affection.
Malice or ill will.
Malice or ill will.
Until I am legally discharged.
Until I am legally discharged.
I will see and cause our communities peace.
Will see and cause our communities peace.
To be kept and preserved.
To be kept and preserved.
I will prevent.
I will prevent.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All offenses against peace.
All offenses against peace.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vic.
That's a thank. You're going to need to go, another round? Makes me happy, man.
Sure.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Thank you.
That was yours.
Easy, thank.
That's pretty long. Thank you, Vic, and thank you for your service. Moving on to item number four, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion as second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Onto item number five, Joe Town Blocks. Dave, do you have a preamble for our guests?
I guess nothing other than, I guess we are not really looking at any, for any action at this point. The representatives from Joe Town Blocks are going to be here, they have some potential changes that they want to get some feedback from the council on before we go through with the full application and bring it back for approval.
Well, I believe we know who you are, but just still state your name, please.
Mary Bruno.
Anne Raisner.
Um, okay, so we just wanted to bring some things to the council to see what some thoughts might be. And the first thing was talking about a new proposed location. You know, last year was a great event, but there were some things that would have been nice to avoid. And one of them was that, you know, on a Sunday, going on Main Street caused a lot of friction with the church that we would just as soon avoid. So, um, we were talking recently about, and we've talked about this many times, this is not the first time we've thought about this, but, um, we thought we would maybe try to give it a shot this year to, um, block off the kind of enclosed alleyway, you know, square behind Minnesota Street, um, and where Bad Habit and the meat market area is. We felt like it'd be more contained and we could, um, we're still gonna ask to block off, like First and Ash for the car show and the, um, fire department is gonna do some water stuff, um, but we thought that that could maybe avoid a lot of what the pain was with the Main Street. So that's kind of our first thing.
And it's just kind of a naturally contained area, so, and when we had talked about Minnesota Street, like Mary said, it was like, this was also talked about, but, and it, we're in our infancy yet with Joe Town Blocks to maybe try a different location to see.
Like it's best to do it now than to wait.
Rather than five years down the road and then flip the switch. So we wanted some guidance from council on that to see pros and cons or questions about that. But now would be a good time to attempt this other location, to give it a shot.
Yeah, so that's a first thing, um, and, you know, mainly are we just going through?
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, then, you know, we've kind of already reached out to most of the businesses that would have some impact and they know about it, they're on board, um.
And nobody commented.
And, yeah, nobody really said too much, you know, obviously there's, most of the businesses are closed on Sunday, but the ones that are not, um, want to be involved. Um, okay.
Yeah, I mean, are there any, do you guys want questions now?
Yeah, sure.
We can pause for a second.
Go ahead, Kevin. No, as far as the locale, so you're talking about the alley that's running east and west?
Um, both alleys.
So there would, in terms of the alleys, yes, so the one that's between, um, like Bodid's and Bad Habit and then also the one that does come off of Minnesota by Rock House there.
Yeah, okay.
So there'd be, we would need barricade, and then the one that comes off of First and one comes off Ash, so there would need to be kind of a barricade, a barricade, a barricade to protect those alleys enclosed.
And then not have people park back to ask those businesses not to have people parking, have one big open area.
Yep, yep, and so there, I mean, obviously there's some apartments above, um, like the laundromat and stuff up there, but it, it's, it's a, the event is twelve to four.
Four hours, yep.
So we would need some extension before and after that, but it's not a twenty-four hour closure, so, so to speak, so. And to Mary's point, just, you know, the meat market's closed, there's some other businesses that are closed, so I don't think it would be extra intrusive, I think it could be a good opportunity for us.
Yeah, I like the idea.
Yeah.
You know, your first foray into a social district.
Totally, yeah, yeah.
There we go.
That's totally what we were thinking, too.
Yeah.
Um, but then we wanted to also bring up, um, because, you know, this is, was our first attempt at this event and it felt like it was really positive and we learned a ton and we're making a lot of adjustments to make it simpler and, um, easier and conserve some of the funds that we don't really have. But the question we wanted to ask the council, too, was like, is this a city event? You know, because this isn't, um, like a fundraiser necessarily for any one thing, this isn't any one business's thing, this is something that, um, was asked of the CBB by the mayor, um, you know, and that's always been our strategy was to host more events and to do more community bonding and building, um, and so I think we want to clarify that because, um, you know, we, there's not going to be a way for us to fundraise for this event, you know, I mean, we, we had the raffle and the, um, dunk tank, but, you know, we can't put on an event like this with, with that kind of money. So I think we're just trying to figure out, um, if it is, and if so, how we can work it in that direction and if it's not, if, you know, then what.
Didn't the EDA give the CBB nine, was it nine grand last year for it?
Yep.
Yep.
And I believe, isn't the EDA planning on doing that again?
Yep.
Yep.
And is nine grand or ten, is that ten not enough to do what you want to do, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but no, that's not what we're saying, right, like, what, we're asking this because there's stuff, um, that as this being a city event that maybe we wouldn't have to pay for or be responsible for, that we had some problems with trying to navigate last year.
Such as?
Yep, so, um, the license, the special event licensing, and then also, um, when we put this event on, we ask food vendors that are local, um, beverage vendors that are local to obviously provide their products and do they have, should they have to be required to pay those, that fee for a Saint Joe event? So I think it's just been a little gray for us to understand what that looks like and.
Was it like the police thing, too?
Uh, yes, yeah, for extra security, there was, yeah, yeah.
I mean, these are small things, but like.
Right, no, if we're sponsoring it, that's, should these things be charged to your budget?
Totally, because then the other way we thought about it, especially with like food vendors, is that these aren't people from Saint Cloud or blah, 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 these are all Saint Joe businesses.
Sure.
And so more about the point of it and the mission of it to be like, let's just have everybody do what they can.
And so you have a list of those things?
Yes.
And you could give that list to Murphy.
Yeah.
And then Murphy could discuss it at a staff meeting.
Yeah, so, so this officially being a city event would just kind of loosen up some of the weird little things that, that are, you know, we shouldn't have to worry about, in our, in our opinion, in our humble opinion. So that, you know, it's not like we're looking for, um, more money or blah, 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 but we just want to tighten up what we.
You're looking at spending less money.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, yeah.
Well, I don't know what the other con, I, I see it as a city event. I don't know, I mean, CBB and EDA, it's not like it's a private party that wanted to do it, so what do other people think?
I would think that we would just, you just keep that in your, your ramifications of the, you know, security and things like that, but it would, it would be a city event, right? So you, you would still say, yeah, you know, Dwight, we need, you know, whatever that was, but I would just formulate that and bring that, like Kevin said, to David, so that we would know exactly what your needs are.
Okay, so the, you would like a list of.
What you would have paid for last year.
Right.
And then we would probably just say, well, we're gonna waive it, waive it, waive it, kind of thing, if we go down that, if we go down that path.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, so one thing, I know this, uh, this idea was, was floated, um, I'd heard about this idea before and, um, so we did a little bit of checking and I guess at some point we'll have to really kind of clarify, where does the CBB fit in this, you know, are, is it really, is it a, a city entity or not? Because when you look at the, at the founding documents, it's somewhat confusing, um, you know, for whether it's truly a city entity or not, um, so, which is fine, but you know, um, but the other thing I would say is, I will take that under advisement, I will, we'll review it, um, bring it back to the council. Uh, the one thing I would say, though, is, um, also just be in mind that this was something that was brought up last year with some of the other events they were looking at, you know.
Like what?
What do other, what do other events get and we don't, so.
Like what?
Particularly the one that was brought up was Rocktoberfest, I know they, they brought up a lot.
That's a school event.
Yeah.
That was not a city event.
But what I'm saying is, is they, they were making comparison to other events and saying, why are they being treated differently? I just want to make sure that, that is something that, that other events will look at, but.
Yes, duly noted.
But I want to make sure that we have an answer for that.
Good.
Right, that's duly noted.
We'll make sure you have an answer.
But.
You mean to like clarify why they're different and then we can say, because this is a city event and.
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah. Okay, is that all we have? Yeah, okay, so we're gonna bring that list to David and then we're gonna chat again.
Okay, and then any feedback is in terms of the map, the mat?
Map.
That is in front of you, pretty self-explanatory, no questions, concerns there?
I like that it's a block, because I like word puns, Joe Town Blocks, it's a block.
Sure.
I also like that it is having less street closures, just so, you know, it's an easier flow of traffic around the city. Hopefully it's a less of an impact for the police department, but I did want to ask Dwight, you know, I would assume that this is going to be safer for pedestrians, it's safer for the vehicles traveling around the block party. Is there any new safety concerns that arise because now it's entirely inside of a block?
No, as long as all the private property owners are good with this, that's gonna be the biggest thing. I mean, your footprint can get a lot smaller if one or two of these, you know, individuals say that their renters prevail or something like that. So I would say, before it goes too much farther in planning, we definitely would want to get an all-in on if this total block would, would be acceptable. And then it's just a matter of just closing off certain blocks, I mean, obviously between Bad Habit, Bodidley's, by Rock House Productions, those are gonna be some pretty easy closures. The Sidle on the Legion, that's gonna probably require a few more barricades up there because that's a little bit more open and stuff like that, too. But, yeah, I mean, the concept itself, I mean, it's hard to say that you can trade Ash Street for Minnesota Street, but we all know the volume that goes down, you know, Minnesota Street's a lot, lot higher, so it would definitely have a lot less impact.
Ryan, do you see this being a little bit easier to execute just because if you're out there providing barricades and like the resources that you provide, it'd be easier to clean up since it's not out in the road, per se?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor, it would be a way easier, uh, street closure to manage for, for opening and closing for us.
Good.
Sweet.
I don't have any questions, thank you, ladies.
All right. I just have one quick question. For clarity, um, as far as response from the business owners, um, if we say, here's, if we send them an email with a response date, if they have any conflicts with that, is that fair? If we haven't heard anything, is that, is that adequate for what you're looking for even, Dwight, as far as?
Well, I mean, as far as my, my concern would be is, I mean, it's private property, so as a city, we can't, you know, tell them what they want to do, but if for some reason, like, the local blend or somebody said, I'm not on board with this, I don't want my parking lot blocked off, we can't, as a city, overrule that, or if all of a sudden the laundromat, they can't get in or out, it might significantly, I know that Bad Habit is likely on board, I don't per se see the meat market, when they're closed on Sunday, it's not gonna impact it, you know, obviously, so, but I don't want to speak for any of those private property owners either, so. I, I, and I don't know that you can necessarily, and this is, I'm not on this end of it, but I don't know that you can necessarily send out an, uh, maybe an invite or something like that, or, or a questionnaire, and if you don't have a response back, just assume they're good with it, I think you'd almost have to get a yes or no out of them, because if all of a sudden we show up the day of this and they said, um, this is not what I let happen and somehow I didn't receive correspondence and now my renters can't get to it, I think you might be in trouble on that one, so. I don't want to see any type of trespassing charges or whatever, I don't know how that would relate to it at all, but I think you should definitely get a positive response, like, yes, we're willing to work with you on this date versus, well, we never heard from you, so.
That's what I just wanted to clear.
Yeah, we always seem to get into these public hearings, too, every so often, where people are very, um, irate afterwards with like loud music and different things or traffic congestions, and then a year later goes by and we get to the public hearing and nobody shows up until the day after the event, and then they're, they're fresh with that, too. So something like this here, I could see somebody not being on their radar until the day of the event and that's what's gonna be really hard for my staff to say, sorry, you didn't respond, so we're just gonna have to let it go for the day, so, just a thought.
All right, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, municipal management services agreement. I believe, David?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, and I will start out by apologizing, uh, about the, the, the manner and how this is coming forward, this is something that, um, literally we are getting updates from the council, from our city council, uh, representatives as far as working with the, the representatives from Red Pine Group and their attorney, our city attorney and that, so, um, what you have before you was, was sent to us at four seventeen this afternoon, so. And, um, part of that is because of the, the nature of how this is coming forward, um, that the OCM, they just put the, that we have until March fourteenth to get this, get this application in. Uh, we found out what the rules really were on February fourteenth, the rules have morphed somewhat as the OCM has reviewed some of this as well and gotten some feedback from the people that are, uh, the municipalities that are looking at applying, so. So anyway, so this is a little bit more of a moving target than we're normally used to here in government, so I just wanted to preface it by saying that. So anyways, as you're aware, um, we are pursuing a municipal dispensary and we've been working with the Red Pine Group to operate that. One of the requirements, um, for the, uh, application is that we have to have a, if, if the city is not going to be oper- operating it themselves and is going to be contracting with another entity to operate it, we need to have some sort of, they wanted the, the, um, that agreement to be included with the application, they have received some clarification based on feedback that they've received from other municipalities that they don't really know that that's gonna be ready for that because of a lot of the different things, we don't exactly know what all the rules are gonna be yet and everything. So anyway, so what they have, gotten back from them is that a memo, a memorandum of understanding will suffice. So, and we did give you a draft, um, agreement with the Red Pine Group, that is still a working document, meaning that it is still under review, um, if you do have any feedback on what was provided in that, please let me know and we can forward that, uh, to our city attorney here as well, however, but that is not really in, um, close to its final form yet. However, the, the memorandum of understanding does include the, the big points as far as who does what, between the two entities, maybe Red Pine Group and the city. So with that, what, um, we need from the council then tonight is a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the MOU.
Not the agreement, the MO.
The MOU, so the, the new resolution that was given to you tonight. So with that, I will take any questions and answer them as best I can based on the information we have as of when I went in here at five fifty tonight.
So just to reiterate, the MOU, this memorandum of understanding that we have is a lot more vague than like the final product that we're obviously going to be agreeing to in the coming weeks.
That is correct.
Okay.
And at any time, we can back out, because I did not read that on here. At any time of any change of the agreement that we are not, you know, privy to or are not appreciative of, we can back out.
Yeah, until such time as the council officially approves the, the contract by motion and accepts the pro, the, the contract and is signed officially, up until that point, we can change or back out of it. Once we would sign that contract, then we're bound by the terms of the contract, but up until then, we are, that is correct.
So the contract, so now you're saying two different things, we've got a draft agreement and a contract, are those the, is that the same thing or two different ones?
Well, the draft, the draft agreement that we have is, is, the, the term we're using, the draft agreement, is the same as the contract, so it's, it's a draft agreement, the, the agreement would be the contract, so it's a draft at this point, however, it has not been one hundred percent agreed to by both their attorney and our attorney.
Okay, so really what we're saying is we need a motion to be able to sign the MOU and disregard the agreement at this time.
That is correct.
Any other questions, feedback? Adam or Andrew? Anything?
Did our attorney put this over?
Our attorney's the one that drafted it.
Well, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the MOU as written before us this evening.
Hold a second.
Sir, excuse me, is there any other feedback or comments? With that, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does carry. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, unpaid leave of absence request, is this, Dwight?
That is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, again, so, um, I'm not, if everybody is aware, um, we do have an officer that is out, um, due to medical leave and has exhausted their FMLA, so they are asking for an unpaid leave of absence for up to Aug, up to and including August eighth of twenty twenty-five, based on any changing conditions, so. Section nineteen point one four of the city's personnel policy states that the city administrator may authorize leave without pay for up to thirty days and the council may authorize for periods greater than thirty days. Uh, the officer has requested an unpaid leave of absence up to August eighth and the city's contribution towards health, dental and life insurance may be continued with council approval for up to ninety days. So with that, um, I have reviewed this with the city's employment attorney, um, the, the FMLA leave has expired, uh, so I have extended that for the thirty days under the authority that I have under the, um, personnel policy and is requesting, and I'm requesting the extension up to August eighth of twenty twenty-five. So with that, um, there would be a motion to approve the unpaid leave, leave of absence for Officer Honer for a period of, for a period beginning February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five and ending on or before August eighth, twenty twenty-five and to continue, excuse me, continue that portion of this, the employee's health insurance for ninety days as stated by the city's personnel policy, which would then end, um, May twentieth of twenty twenty-five. So I will, excuse me, I'll take any questions you may have.
Does this period of unpaid leave of absence, um, also cover a period of maternity leave? Or is this up into like, uh, proposed or thought of delivery date?
Um, not, this, this would be through what, what would normally be, um, given for a maternity leave, meaning after the delivery date, so.
Okay.
The, the delivery, from what I'm hearing, it would be before that.
Okay, I, I just ask because having a very new son myself, I understand how important it is they have time afterwards. That's the only question I have.
Yeah, be careful how I can answer that.
Any other comments or questions, otherwise we're looking for a motion of approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
With no other questions or comments, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Onto number eight, department reports, uh, Dwight, Ryan, Randy? Nothing? You guys are awesome.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I do have a couple here real quick, so, um, just a couple real quick ones, so, uh, as, so, um, the city engineer and I will be down at the Capitol tomorrow to testify for the, before the, uh, capital investment committee for the bonding money for the sanitary sewer line, um, that will be before the, um, before the legislature this year, hopefully get included in the bonding bill, so we will be there probably most of the day tomorrow. And then as a reminder, we will have the legislative day at the Capitol on Thursday, um, so, uh, if at all possible, those who will be going, if I could keep your offer just a minute or two after the council meeting, we could just kind of coordinate some of the items that we have there, uh, and other than that, I am hoping to, I'm honing, focusing on the first Wednesday in April, hopefully as the day that would work for our team building and, um, uh, visiting sessions, so please let me know ASAP if that does not work for you. Mary, Charlie, I will take any questions.
So the second?
Yes, yep. I just didn't have my calendar right in front of me, but when you said that, that sounds right, yeah. I just didn't have my calendar right in front of me, but when you said that, that sounds right, yeah.
Moving on to item number nine, mayor and council reports. Anything to report? Well, I have a couple of things. This past weekend, Kelly and I attended a elected leaders program in Alexandria. I understand that Andrew and Adam attended one previously in Plymouth in the last couple of weeks. So I know, and Kevin, I'm sorry. I know I got a lot out of the weekend that Kelly and I attended. We learned about decision-making, we learned about contracts and how those are structured. And I'm looking forward to our team building day that David's looking to work for us because can get to know our counselors better. And also, if you have free time and, and enjoy beer and want to patronize a business this week, this Thursday, the law play at six thirty, I'm holding my second mayor forum. So same format as the first one last week, this one you're gonna have a beverage, it'll be just a one-hour Q and A, you can ask me anything you'd like. We'll see how well that goes. If we have nothing else to report, item number ten, looking for a motion.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.